I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Durkin.
Here.
Ms. Ruska.
Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Yara.
Here.
Ms. Palmer.
Here.
Ms. DeLa.
Here.
Here.
Okay, discussion items and jump right into COVID-19 transition.
So, you know, as I mentioned before, we have the matrix in there. Obviously, the numbers are going in the right direction. Now, we are actually in blue, which is good. We have two variables in minimal, two variables in moderate, and only one in substantial. Also, our local numbers have gone down. As you see, our local positivity rate is at 365 as of last Friday. So, that's a very good sign. In regards to the vaccination update, I got a call today at about 2:30 this afternoon to one of the connections that I had from previous, I worked with her at Morton, and she helps us out. She works at Pillars. But we got 20 staff members vaccinated today on the last-minute call, and we're sending another 30 tomorrow. So, that'll be 50 staff members vaccinated on short notice, and that continues to be kind of what's going on out there. We were on the waitlist still with Jewel Osco. As of last week, we were down to 12. But at this point in time, if we can get 50 staff members vaccinated over the next two days, and then have, we have a lot of staff members who have went and gotten their vaccine themselves. So, I think we're on pace to hopefully have everybody received their first dose before the end of the month. So, that was good news today, and it happened. When I say it happened, I mean literally, I'm like, I said, you know, I don't want to cut our conversation short, but I got to hang up with you and have a call to principal to make the announcement. So, I had to hang up, make an all-staff announcement, we had to get people to come down, sign up, go over, so. But that was a really good, and it was close. It was in La Grange, so they were, we got 50 people, 50 staff members, and that's open to our Quest employees, our Airmark employees. So, that's really good news. Dr. Freitas and his administrative team, and I'll provide a few minutes here for Dr. Freitas to provide an update, but they're working on a plan to get students that want the ability to come four days a week for fourth quarter, like the board said they prefer last board meeting. So, Dr. Freitas will provide an update on that. And then, what we talked about a little bit today at our cabinet meeting was he'll have some of these bullet points laid out so they can come in the board packet, and the board members can see it ahead of time. So, if it generates any questions for the board, it will provide you an opportunity to ask those questions. So, Hector will have that for the committee of the whole meeting, but he'll provide an update on like where we are athletics and activities, surveying the community in order to try to get students in for four days a week, fourth quarter, some of the targeted interventions they're doing now, where we have some students coming fourth quarter. So, he'll provide that update here shortly. I think from a district perspective, that's most of the stuff I needed to report out on COVID. Hector, do you want to provide the building level update?
I will. Good evening, board members, students, and families watching. Guys, I'm real excited because as we get closer to fourth quarter, you know, we're gonna be bringing more students back. Currently, the building administration is finalizing steps that need to be taken to allow up to 50% of enrollment to attend in-person learning for days a week beginning fourth quarter, the week of March 15. The weekly schedule will remain the same, but I do ask that to ensure a safe transition, we're doing the following. So, I do ask for a little patience. Currently, we're working with maintenance and staff to set up over 51 classrooms to ensure desks are socially distanced when possible. And you can imagine that our maintenance has been very busy dealing with the snow and making sure our floors are dry. So, it is taking some time, but we are on it. We're currently facilitating opportunities for staff members to get vaccinated. Thank you, Dr. Skinkis and Dr. Smetana. You know, I kind of got the call on the rush, and I joined the team as well. We're currently securing overflow rooms. So, if we do have students coming, for some reason, there's an overflow, we need to make sure we have a safe place for students. We're currently creating a commitment form so we know what families will be sending their students to RB for in-person learning for fourth quarter. This form will go out on February 22. We'll give families a few weeks, two weeks to respond, and then we have to follow up. So, we want to make sure we have those commitments done, you know, in the beginning of March, but it will take some time. When you send a survey, then you have to follow up with individuals to make sure we know. Currently, we're implementing targeted interventions for third quarter such as permitting general education students with Ds and Ss as well as students with IPs that in extra support academically to attend school daily. Attendance for in-person, we've been averaging slightly about 200 students the last two weeks. You know, some of the reasons, you know, behind the dip, you guys could imagine, the weather's miserable right now. It is freezing. It's been snowing, I want to say, every other day. And guys, let's not forget that remote learning has been very successful for many family members, and many of our families out there have chosen remote learning because our staff has done such a great job in engaging our community and our students through remote learning. Lunches, they're available every day. Students, as you leave, grab your lunch, you pop it in the microwave, and you are good to go. To all my students, they help out your family, get the lunch and eat, okay? Because you know your families are working, so that can be very helpful for your family.
Hector, there's lunch and breakfast in there, correct?
Correct. There is lunch and breakfast for multiple days, correct? And they can pick it up daily.
Okay.
Updates on athletics and activities. Last week, my assistant principal for athletics, Mr. Brendan, and I sent a message to all parents, students, and staff about our current sports and allowing fans in the building. Please remember, this situation is fluid and could change day to day, week to week. Currently, guidance from the governing bodies state that there needs to be 30 feet distance between the athletes and fans, and we could only allow up to 50 fans, parents per contest. This can only be achieved at the moment right now for boys' and girls' basketball. Unfortunately, for badminton, gymnastics, and swimming, we cannot meet that guidance. Activities such as chess club, minority empowerment club, Association Student for Taller Robotics are up and running, and there are many activities happening at the moment. And lastly, parents and students, guys, I need your help, okay? Teaching is in this concurrent environment, right? Teaching both in-person learners and remote learners is extremely difficult. Our teachers are planning, preparing, and they're giving a lot of effort and engaging you all. I ask that students, guys, please respond at times when you can, turn on your cameras, message. Guys, engage, okay? Because what we're asking our teachers to do now has never been done before. They care about you. They plan. They're doing a standing job. So, I ask parents and students, please help us engage in learning, okay? And now, I'd like to share a little information on the second semester 50% enrollment survey. Respondents, students, 110 responded. That's about 7% of our student population. Parents, 563 responded, which is about 41% of the parents that are in Skyward. And we asked some key questions. The first one, I read the student responses, is the school providing a safe environment? 99% of students said yes. One said no. Guys, if there's something that we can do better, please let me know. Email me, call me, come visit me. I welcome you. Please let me know, students, okay? The next question that I asked here was, do you feel engaged in in-person learning? 49% of, 49 said yes. Five said no. Okay, if you are fully remote. Again, for those that said no, majority are engaged, like, please let me know, okay, what we can do. Do you feel engaged during remote learning? We have 66% that say yes, 33% that say no. What are we doing? Communicate with me, communicate with your teacher. Guys, we are always open to developing our craft, so please let us know. But I'm glad that for the majority, it is engaging. Common themes that I found from the student responses on the opening, the questions were, what is going well? Students are saying the teachers are awesome. They're engaging, and they love the in-person interactions. They're loving remote learning, and communication has been great with homework, with attendance, expectations, et cetera. One needs to be improved. Guys, I get it, guys. You want to see more students and more days, right? A few students asked, and I loved it because, Dr. Vidi, could we have music back in the hallways? You know, we love hearing those safety announcements, but now you guys are hearing music, so we're back with the music. I know you guys get how to wear your mask, how to be socially distanced. And then, students also need some check-ins. I know there are some teachers that every Friday or Monday do a check-in, a well-being check. How are you guys? How's this experience, you know? Guys, students, if for some reason you're feeling, so, guys, let your teacher know. Can we talk about this on Monday or on Friday or any day? Guys, be, make sure you let them know. And then, I asked the student, what would consider you, what would consider you coming to school or your friends? Vaccinations, right? That's powerful. Vaccination of staff and students, having more students in the building and more sports and activities. Guys, our sports are up and running. Our activities are up and running. I hope those are reasons to come to school. And remember, our building is always open for you all. For the parents, asked them the same questions. The first one is, school providing a safe environment? 287 said yes. Six said no. For those six, please let me know what we're doing and what can we do to be better. That is a majority that said yes. For, does your student feel engaged during in-person learning? Absolute majority, 264 say yes, 23 said no. Okay, and a few, yeah, there's many that are fully remote that chose NA. But again, majority feel engaged during in-person learning. I know a few said no. What do we need to do? Please communicate with me. Does your student feel engaged during remote learning? 70% said yes, 399, 29% said no, 165. So, it's working for the majority, but for that third, guys, what is happening? Please let me know and let the staff know as well. And lastly, some common themes that I found from the open on the question for what's going well, the engagement, in-person interaction, remote learning, and communication from teachers and admin. One needs to be improved. Guys, I get it. You want more days and more students in the building. And lastly, will make you consider sending your students to school, the vaccination of staff, more students in the building, and more days for learning. Guys, it is coming soon, but like I said earlier, we're currently in the planning phase, but we'll get there. And that is my principal's report, Dr. Skinkis.
Okay, so just to touch on three points that I wrote down, the 51 classrooms, the reason Dr. Freitas bring it up, so out of the 600 kids that have roughly been attending the 50% in-person hybrid days or blended days. So, what we do is we then pulled those 600 together, checked, cross-referenced their schedule, and see how many, if they all came together on the same day. So, we had 51 classrooms that would be right at where we would consider to be capacity with social distancing. So, that's why we have to remember. The requirement is not six feet. It's six feet when possible. So, we have maintenance working on like, okay, what is the maximum number of students we can get in some of the smaller classrooms with still four feet or five feet, whatever we can in order to accomplish some social distancing and not, we need to still maintain that teacher's teaching space or the teaching box that we made sure we had for all our teachers. So, those 51 classrooms, we're sorting through those things now. Hector's working on with his team, the survey. Hector, we may need to send it out probably the few days before the 22nd, just to give us enough time. So, I was just walking through this a little bit with Wes as we were walking down here. We are going to be looking for, to see how many students, the main thing, question we'll be looking to ask is, how many students are interested in finishing the school year remote, or parents are interested in keeping their students remote? That will give us our first number. Then, the second number would be trying to get that hard commitment of coming all four days. Because if we have a lot of people fill out the survey just because they think they're going to want to do this come fourth quarter, and we're over 800 people, it will be, we will not be able to do four days a week then. Because, you know, 800 is kind of the magic number. So, the ability of going 400 or four days a week now is thinking, okay, if you're having only 30% of what you're supposed to be at, it's easy to put both of those groups together. So, we just got to keep an eye on that as we prepare for, as the weather breaks in the spring and then activities and athletics are full swing, if that will drive up attendance and numbers, student attendance numbers. And so, Dr. Freitas and his team are working on a backup plan. So, like, in the event we need to keep with the 50% hybrid because too many kids are coming in person, then we would work on some of these overflow rooms or doing targeted interventions, or maybe we would target any students with IP, students that have earned a D or an F, third quarter, looking at students, maybe the freshman class, try to get our freshmen on track. So, those are all different avenues we're looking at. Another thing Dr. Freitas mentioned about the fluid and example, like our first boys' basketball game, I think was supposed to be today or tomorrow. It was today originally. That had to be postponed because they had to quarantine their team because they had a case on their, or somebody had a close contact on their team. So, it's going to be a fluid situation throughout the rest of the school year. I just want to make sure the board and the community that are watching the meetings understand that we're doing everything possible within the guidelines that were provided by both the state for having school in session, but also for after-school in-person activities and athletics. I don't have any other things to report out on in regards to COVID. Does the board have any questions?
I just had a question about, I mean, there's only 7% of students took the survey. I know.
Correct.
I mean, is there anything else that we can do to try to get more? And I thank all the students who filled it out. You know, I found it funny that one of the, one of the students even commented that, you know, what he's writing probably doesn't even matter. You know, it does matter.
It does not.
It absolutely matters. Do, does the staff have an opportunity to see those responses?
You know, I do share, and, you know, there are some teachers that, you know, did offer, Dr. Vidi, you can have the survey, give it during my period, during my class period, but guys, I just, their learning time is not so sacred. And so, that I, you know, I shouldn't feel bad as a principal because I believe in this, and this helps drive our plan, but I don't want to take a minute from the learning we have, you know? So, I do remind, I do the e-blast, I do the phone blast. You guys get my messages. But, you know, my staff has been so responsive. I just, I'm like, I need you to, I need those few minutes. I know you want to team with me, you know, to teach, you know? So, I could, I could push it, and my staff has been great. You know, I just, I'm like, you guys only have 30 minutes. Please, you know.
Well, and I mention it because there are actually a lot of students called out teachers about what a great job they're doing. So, I think it would be really nice, right, for those teachers to see that recognition, that they're doing a really good job. I just wish we had more responses because out of the 7%, like, there were quite a few kids who had talked about feeling anxious, and, you know, there were just some comments that I wish they were a little bit more upbeat. I don't know if the rest of the board members read through all of them, but there were some of them. I love the comment about the kid who thinks you're giving out like old sandwiches, but, right, like, how funny is that? He's like, they're giving out old sandwiches for lunch.
That's so random.
It was very random.
Okay, that's not.
And that's not true.
But just that there's follow-through on some of these, I'm sure it's not true. But just so that there's follow-through on some of those comments, because some of the comments were very thoughtful. Like, some were really, like, the students, it was obvious that they took the time, and they were really thoughtful in their responses, which I appreciate.
No, I absolutely agree, and I also think some of the parent comments about, why would I send my kid back if they're just teaching to the Zoom, which is clearly a dramatic departure from, you know, this semester to, from last semester. And I was wondering if the team was following up with any of those specific comments, whether it's the students who had some interesting commentary or the families, just to kind of course-correct a little bit. Because there were a handful that really left off the page. I mean, I didn't get through all of them.
Yeah, some of them were. I mean, there was one that asked, are we getting a graduation? I'd rather be disappointed now.
Yeah.
And you read it, and you're like, oh, gosh. And I know we can't make that decision. It's way too early, but.
Well, they'll have some kind of graduation.
At the worst-case scenario, it'll be another drive-up like we did last.
Yeah.
Right. So, we already have that as our backup. We're looking at what we can do in the stadium socially distanced.
Yeah. No, but I just think there's a lot of good individual feedback in that. I mean, even with 7% or what was the 41% of the families? That's, that's pretty good. In some cases, the family is speaking on behalf of the family. And I, I think, Dr. Freitas, you made a good point of mentioning, I mean, there are a number of our families who are not intending to come back into the, to the school until the numbers are completely gone and there's a vaccination. I think we do need to be mindful of that and then try to balance out those who want the four days a week, which I think is an equally, you know, valid position. So, I guess my, my question was on this commitment form. Is this, are we looking for a firm commitment from families that if you say you're coming fourth quarter, then you will be, your attendance will be reflected Monday through Thursday or Tuesday through Friday in fourth quarter?
So, we've been, you know, we got some good feedback today from some of our teaching staff, and we also had a couple of parents that have called, and that's some of the questions they're asking. Like, we had a family say like, I would like to send my kid, but we live with the grandparents, and until I can get them vaccinated, they can't come. They would be willing to come four days once I get. So, the question was, you know, we were talking, and Dr. Freitas and myself, and like I said, a teacher sent in some good feedback today, like, what do you do with that family that until they, you know, if they got to make this hard commitment in February, are we going to let them on April 1st if their family's vaccinated and they can come, right? And that's what I was explaining to Wes as we were walking here, is that once you start getting closer to that 800 number, you know, that's not realistic then to go four days a week. We have to stick with the current plan. I was still doing the two days at 50%. So, I think we need to still, as a, I think Hector and his team need to still hash through that a little bit. And then, when they're going to bring a final draft, and we're hoping to have a layout of that survey to you at the next board meeting. But some things were brought up today that, like, we didn't even totally think about it. The original intent was, yes, you'll tell us now by the, by March 1st what your hard commitment would be, in-person or remote. And then, you know, what do you do in some of those cases where there might be an exception that they want to come in? Because they can't, and it's, it's things out of their reach. So, we, we are still sorting through that. I'd be wrong to say that we have a concrete plan on that part just yet.
Okay.
But there is a, there is, there's got, there's a mathematical equation that's going to work out there. We just haven't hit it yet. And that might be the, they're definitely, from the comments, from the parents, there's parents that have no intention of coming back. There's definitely that. And those, that's step one. I mean, there's the maybe category. Maybe the maybe category stays in the 50%. I'm only Tuesdays and Thursdays. I'm only Wednesdays and Fridays. Then, there's the, I want to come every day, the four days, rather, that everything, four days category. So, I mean.
So, the overflow room, overflow room like Hector, Hector mentioned was like, so if we did that model that Wes just described, and if students send their in-person days on an A-through-L day or A-through-K day, and a, the number got over to where we could be set up safely in that classroom, is it for that student that's not, not on their A-through-K day, so an M, you know, an L-through-Z kid, if they're, you know, if there's two or three of them do that, for that specific class, so they go to an overflow room and participate on the Zoom for that class, but they might get three or four other classes that day where they can be in person? I mean, those are all the kinds of things that we're trying to sort out. And I know from your guys' perspective, hey, there's 13 seats, first come, first served. Like, that's really hard for that teacher that day to be preparing. Am I having a full house today? If I only got 35 minutes, are my first five minutes figuring out who's supposed to be there and calling for security to escort three kids down to the overflow room because I'm at max capacity today? So, those are those kinds of things we're still trying to sort out so that it doesn't become an operational nightmare. Because the 50% in-person has been going really well so far this semester. And so, those are some of the things that we're still trying to work out that you asked.
And thank you. I look forward to seeing next. I think somebody that, that group that's perceiving it as optional right now is what we're trying to understand what their game plan is, you know, as the weather gets warmer and transportation becomes less of an issue, hopefully, you can walk to school again. And then, you know, if you're a senior, can you commit and not just stay home Monday and Wednesday because it seems easier?
Right.
Right?
Yeah. If you're committing, you're coming, right? You're supposed to be there.
Right.
And you're taking a spot if someone wants to come.
Right. And I think that's the messaging that, that will need to come out as part of that discussion.
Dr. Freitas, you're getting all this down, right? Okay. Lilly, Michael, what about your thoughts so far on how things are going and looking forward to this fourth quarter? Any ideas?
I think things are going well. I don't really know how to tell if kids want to come four days a week. I mean, it really just depends on the student and their family. So, I'm not sure I can speak for everyone on this issue. But I know that for the kids going in person, things are going really well. I have enjoyed it myself, and everyone feels a lot more productive in class. So, I believe that the kids who are coming for the two days a week will, will continue the commitment for four days a week. But I don't know. We'll just see.
Yeah, I agree with Lilly. I think that if you're already coming in for two days, you're most likely going to be coming in for four. But I think, like Dr. Skinkis said, it's the people that think it's optional, like, that'll come one day, won't come another. That I think, well, there's obviously very circumstances for that, but like, if they're actually thinking of it as an optional thing, then that needs to be like shamed out, like you said, because I think then we can have something more solid and a solid plan for that. Yeah, but I think everything Lilly said, I agree with too.
Do you have any other advice for Dr. Freitas as he puts together this plan of how to get more student feedback on those surveys or anything of that?
I think he's doing everything he can. I'm getting a message all the time, like.
We do get a lot of messages.
Yeah, so I think if they're not taking, if students aren't taking it, then they just are choosing out to.
I really think that we should do it during one of the class periods. I truly believe that's the best way to get it done, even though I know you don't want to take the learning time. I mean, I would maybe do it during PE. No, hate PE. But, you know, kids like barely do the workouts anyway at homes, you know, they kind of just, you know.
How long did it take you to take the survey?
It was quick.
It's probably really quick.
Two minutes, five minutes?
No, I think it took less than five minutes for me to do it. I mean, maybe if they're writing a longer response, but I mean.
Yeah, for the kids who write like paragraph or two, it might take a while. But most students are only writing a couple of sentences. I mean, that can't take that long. We all use our phones a lot. So, we're fast typing.
I think it was, what, eight, 10 questions, right? It should not be a big-time commitment.
Well, I only ask because if, if, of how much learning time would it actually take up if, if we asked to do it during?
PE.
I think that's the best option.
You know, X hour, you know, or X period of the day, second period when I was, you know, in school. Second period was like homeroom or whatever, you know? I was just trying to figure out how much learning time could be, could be taken up. That's the reason I ask.
I mean, is the thought that we need more data from students for this particular survey? Or is this about kind of the next round?
I think the next round, we need to be really, because we even talked about anybody that doesn't fill it out and possibly calling.
So, maybe you do want to take class time just for that one because.
Yeah, because who's going to sit on the phone and make all those calls?
We have to spread it out through.
Well, we don't want to.
It's called all, all other duties assigned in your job description.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, that's why.
That would be like 1,400 calls. Like, that's a lot of calls.
Well, that would be easy.
Okay, what day is he coming into house?
Right.
No, we'll get to, we'll.
Company didn't help organize that.
Well, and I also think that, you know, we're waiting for the, the fourth quarter plan, and that's appropriate, and the time is here. But, I mean, I would, I would encourage us to be having some kind of thought towards what next fall looks like, and maybe that becomes the timing for the penultimate survey where we really want to get feedback. Because, you know, when it comes time for next fall, where are we going to be as a, as a pandemic? Where are we going to be in terms of what tier we can be operating in? I think it's going to be a lot of planning and work, unfortunately, for, for the team to get us to a different place to open in the fall of '21. So, I kind of put that out there not to.
Well, I was thinking the same thing with some of the comments that referred to waiting for a vaccine. Well, are the, are the parents waiting for the teachers to get vaccinated? Are they waiting for the kids? Because if they're waiting for the kids, you know, that's not happening by August.
Yeah, they were very specific waiting for the kids' vaccine, which made me talk to Kevin today about.
So, you're right. So, come fall.
The fall.
So, the idea, you know, just so you guys.
Maybe it's not even approved for kids.
Just so you guys understand is that while we're thinking of that, the first goal is to get kids back. And as soon as we get kids back in and we get the plan for fourth quarter, it will be graduation, and while the building team is working on like graduation and senior culminating events or activities for the end of the year, that's where Kristen and I start kind of eggshelling, what does the fall look like? And then, as we get through towards, you know, we lock in those events and planning for those events, we start brainstorming with, you know, whether it's reconvening the committee or pulling people back together to start talking about what, what does the fall look like now. The key thing that the board needs to remember is, I think we're showing that we can handle the mitigating factors. It will be revised guidelines from the state. Because if we don't get revised guidelines from the state, it will be very tough to pull off lunch with 800 kids in the building. If we don't get revised guidelines from the state, it'll be very tough to go do more than a 50% hybrid. Because I think if, you know, as, as you do it, things will get better, right? So, I think, you know, we got to watch our attendance as the weather breaks and the spring sports and everything's full-blown, what our attendance will be. Then, the next thing you got to look at is, okay, if we're coming back at the start of the school year and everybody saw how good fourth quarter and third quarter went, you're going to expect right away your numbers are going to be up. And if there's not revised guidelines from the state that reduces some of the things that we have in place right now for some of these safety factors, we will have to continue to do the hybrid. So, we have to kind of let, again, we're at the mercy of the state a little bit in regards to timing and requirements from the IDP agents of those.
Still a fluid situation, right? And you don't want to start planning too far in advance, right? Because it's a waste of, it'll be a waste of your time.
But I do think.
There is a sweet spot, for sure.
A lot of the, a lot of the important things have been hashed out. I think we've worked through some good MOUs on stipends and things, or our teachers' union, our sick bank stuff. Our, you know, having, getting staff vaccinated will be big because that will eliminate some of the hurdles that we had to go through for a semester. So, I do think. So I do think planning wise, it'll be a, a, a lot easier. It will just be relying on communication from the state and what guidelines. Are they going to expect you to have a remote option? You know, that was a requirement from the state. Are they going to keep that requirement again for another year? If that's the case, if you're already having teachers prepare then, which will have the technology hurdle overcome. But we, we would then have to figure out, you know, again, um, you know, how, how we're going to manage the remote learners. So, um, and I think we, we're well aware, we need to, we cannot forget that fall, fall will be quickly among, upon us, right? So I think Dr. Freitas and I will be ready for that. Right, Dr. Freitas?
That's right. We'll be ready.
Okay. So the next, the next thing on the discussion item, I put mission statement. And where we left off back in last February, I know it seems for forever, but February 2020, Mr. Jacobs was giving a presentation. He had the nice color-coded thing where the words were the same and different examples we were using. And we were working on the mission statement. Now, I love that the board is helping the, you know, we've having these thorough conversations. But I do think now that, that we have gotten our legs under us with the, with the administration and the school operating with students on campus and having the athletics and activities back up and running, I'd like to start having some of those discussions, the things the board was working on. So I just put this on there for now, but I think this is a placeholder, like, we probably should get back to discussing the mission statement. I think it'd be good to have the updated mission statement complete before the school board elections in April and have at least that piece of business out of the way so that when that new board is seated in the spring, uh, those candidates in the board that are candidates that still have two years on their term can then sit down and start looking at new district goals, because that was the next step. First defining the mission and then getting back to district goals. So I just put this on there as a placeholder to kind of, you know, tell the board, like, I, I was talking with Mr. Smithing about this as we set the agenda, like, we want to start getting back to, I mean, we're, we're not out of the pandemic, but I do think we're in a better place, you know, where we are today and that we can start getting back to some more focused board business. Next month also, you'll get the financial projections. Those are going to be some, there's going to be some things that you guys really need to start discussing and taking a hard look at the next three to five years that Kristen will be presenting. Uh, because we don't really know how bad the impact will be from the pandemic. I mean, it might be something that we're dealing with for two, three years after the fact. Uh, so I know that Kristen and myself, the Finance Advisory Council, Deanna and Wes, we've spent some time going through these and looking at different scenarios. You'll get those financial projections at the February Cal. You'll have a special ed report and a staffing report at the March meeting. And then when we get back from spring break, uh, at the, probably the second meeting in April, we'll have to seat the, the new candidates elected to the school board. So I mean, we have some board business or some board matters that we're going to really have to start diving into over the next three meetings. And so that was the purpose that we put in the mission, is the board okay if we start getting back to some of the things we were doing pre-pandemic?
Yes. Yeah. I seem to remember before pandemic took over that we were going to try and come a half hour, 45 minutes early to a meeting to kind of go over that mission statement, to, you know, talk about it, to write it together there. You know, you had it in the colors and to just finalize it to get anyone who wanted to come early. Did we want to do that maybe before the Cal?
Well, I would think probably at the Cal meeting, we let Tom kind of revisit the presentation he gave and kind of see where we're at. Because if we still, if we feel like we're still far off and that we need to do another short workshop or a pre-meeting to work through that, or if the board wants to appoint like a, a group to work with the superintendent on that, we can. But I think probably just to rehash everything with everybody, it might be a good idea for Tom to re-give his condensed version of his presentation next month, just to kind of where we, where we left off. I mean, you're talking, that's a full year.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
I remember colors, but right, it was a year ago.
I'm impressed that you remember that much because honestly, I barely remember the colors. So, um, yes. Well, there were a few sentences. Deanna had a, a couple ideas and then there are ideas that we had said that would come 45 minutes early to just discuss some of those words and sentences and we thought we'd be able to get it done. Yeah, I'd love a review. Yeah. So, well.
Just a review. Are you okay with that, Tom? Would you be willing to do that again?
Yeah, I'd be.
And you and I could touch base before the February Cal. I think I have a copy of that for you. If not, you can go through it again.
Got to be in board books somewhere.
Totally. But I, I think my, my thoughts might have evolved a bit, as I'm sure all of yours did. I mean, for me, what was so amazing is that we, you know, when you have a mission statement discussion, it's always a little, you know, 30,000 feet and, you know, you're haggling about words. But the one thing we've, I think almost all version included was some version of we live in a rapidly changing world. And here we are, you know, like this tsunami came over us with COVID-19. And what my hope is that by re-engaging with the statement, that we also somehow find a way to get the broader community, all the stakeholders, especially the teachers and parents and whoever, right? There was one session that we had that was in this room.
Right.
That was an open invited thing. And it, for me, that was like the most valuable by far because we can finish our job, I have no doubt, and come up with a reasonable, you know, revised statement. But what a mission statement ultimately is there to hopefully guide you through are the, you know, like how much did that really help us over the last 12 months? I saw many other points that hopefully we find a way to talk about where we have to do better. Like whether it's communication or just acting more in good faith on all sides. There's so much to talk about. So. Sorry for, this is a long-winded answer. Nobody asked for it.
That's, that's, that's why I'm bringing it back up because I think it starts with the mission statement.
Yeah.
And the idea was to try to get that mission statement finished. And if you, if you time, if you just kind of backwards map this, if we can somewhat finalize a mission statement and then after the board elections, let that, that new group take that mission statement and start maybe do another community, you know, meeting and start talking about goals and direction. Because that was the next phase. It was supposed to be revise the mission statement, hash out some goals, and then maybe pull that group again together to show the community group, okay, here's the mission statement the board came up with based on the feedback he gave us at the first meeting. Here's a draft of some district goals, you know, and, and help set some direction with that stakeholder group. So.
Well, remember Kevin, at all the training we've gone to, the job the board has. We hire superintendent, we set the district goals.
Yes. I'm just saying if, if they wanted to get community feedback on the direction for those goals, they could, we could have another session after that mission statement was written.
So I think the mission statement gives us the direction of goals. We can, but then the board has to kind of do its job. I, I think it can get feedback after they come up with those goals. But I don't think it's the board's place to be saying, help us come up with goals. That, that's what we're elected to do.
Well, I think that, I mean, now I'm going down the rabbit hole with everyone else, so I'm sorry. I think that document we got from that session included draft mission and some draft goals. So I think we've got a template for both, is my recollection. But Kevin, I think you're right. We need to dust it all off and, and kind of refresh. But I, I mean, I agree with Laura, but I do think some of the, a lot of the work has been done. It's about looking at it now through the lens of the last 12 months. And, and really understanding what it means for the, for the next multiple years.
There would be some benefit of possibly pulling that stakeholder group again. I think there's been some changeover in some of those stakeholders that participated. But also by having that group, they've all lived through that pandemic. And so kind of seeing like, hey, we're setting these goals, but you know what we realized, like, maybe there needs to be more of a focus on technology, or maybe there needs to be more of a focus on career readiness. Or, you know, what, what are some things like Tom brought up, like, you know, that, that came out? You know, for, for a school's sake, with the exception of having a, a major catastrophe and having your school be closed because of some kind of weather disaster or something like that. This was a pretty extreme case of where a school had to like flip how they play school like on the drop of a dime, right? We talk about changing how we did graduation last year, trying to get kids back in the classroom. Got kids back in classroom, teachers having to re-figure out how to teach. So I think, um, you know, by, by refocusing the mission statement, dusting off where we are with that template and then as, based on those discussions, maybe, maybe we do something again in the spring or the summer where we bring a small group together to get some more feedback. It, it's never, it never hurts an elected board to make sure you're taking some time to get some feedback from the group, from the community and, and the group. So you guys can, you have plenty of time to discuss this more. And I think based on the discussions we're hearing, it'll be good to start with a refresher on the mission and start getting back into some of the things you were accomplishing as a board before the pandemic. That's all I'm trying to do is kind of bring us back to that.
No, I think that's exactly what we wanted to do, get back to the business of.
Yeah. Just give you a time.
I mean, we got sidetracked for all the right reasons.
FOIA, we have five FOIA requests. One was a duplicate. And all those responses are attached, so you can see the email responses we responded to the FOIA request.
Okay. Visitor statements? I don't see any visitor statements. Additional discussion items. At this point in the meeting, board of education members may request to add an additional discussion item.
So I, I will bring up, I think, what I wrote in my, my board notes. It's obviously we're, we're nearing not quite the end, but close to the end of the student, our first year with the student representatives. And so I think we probably owe them and, and we owe the, the larger group a, a good discussion as to what worked, what didn't work, what you guys got out of it, what we could have done differently as a board or, or the administrative staff. So I'm, I'm not sure this is the time to talk about it today. We probably want to prepare for it. But if we could put it on the agenda in the coming months, I think it would be helpful. And as you go into the next round of elections.
Yeah, I think probably by spring break or right after spring break is probably the time, right?
Because I'd like to hear.
We've got to replace you, you all, or one, or how we're going to do that. I think that's a, that's a very good discussion.
Coming up with this idea, I think it's a tremendous success. Getting your input, both of your input, you know, as representatives of the students has been very valuable. And, um, you know, it, it's needed. So.
And what a year to jump into it, huh?
Right. But I think I'd like to get to some, some tangibles, right? Some, you know, we would have liked to know more about budgeting or human resources or technology or what we could have done to kind of make things smoother in light of the pandemic or not. But I think that, that's the kind of feedback, and, and not for now. I'm not going to put you on the spot. But I think that's, and not to give you homework. That's not my role, but I just think that would be helpful.
Lilly and Michael, your last meeting is the May committee of the whole. And so we will probably work on electing two new student advisors. We'll probably put that application out sometime in April. And then the committee will do interviews again for student advisors sometime in May. So as we would recognize Lilly and Michael at the May Cal, we would introduce who the two new students will be. And they do not start till August. We do not ask student board members to attend a June or July meeting. So that just gives you a timeline. So if the board was going to have a discussion, I would think, um, you know, sometime in March or as soon as we get back to, the, the two meetings in April would probably be a good discussion time.
Yeah, and just to add on to what Deanna suggested, I think what I would love to hear from you, from the two of you is, how was it what you thought it was and how was it different? For instance, you know, I don't remember when you interviewed, I mean, you also, you had great ideas and you said we, we're going to try to engage students. How much were you able to do that? Where did it not work? Right? I mean, if we get that kind of feedback, it might actually help us tweak how we select or how we interact with the next group.
I also think because of COVID, like, it was, we didn't expect.
It's not a good sample, right?
You weren't able to eat lunch every day where your student, your classmates are really engaged in the hallways and see, right? And provide some feedback on things that we were normally doing. You know, so that, that's a good point.
Yeah, I think people have, or, well, the small conversations, right? That we, especially as educators, I think, and students have in the hallways and, and in the lunchrooms. And those are very much missed by many people. I had one the other day that was very eye-opening with another, with an administrator who, who has to be in the building every day. But I walked away thinking, God, I missed that. That's right. I found out a lot of valuable information from that quick little two-minute conversation that I had about what they need and where they're at. And, and those, you know, those are the kinds of things where you would be gaining insight that just don't exist.
All right. So that's, thank you. Yeah, that's great. Consent agenda, action item, approval of minutes?
Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items, approves minutes from the meeting. Meetings held on January 12th and 26th, 2021, open and closed as presented in the February 9th, 2021 board agenda packet.
Second.
Second, my missus here, and there's the roll call.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Ruskell?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Yes. Move on to all business action items, life safety, capital improvements, sustainability.
Uh, no additional updates in regards to life safety. Kristen and Joel, the bids will be coming in for the railings. They're one of the final remaining projects on the life safety 2013 to 2023 report. That should, we should have those numbers by February. And will we have them for the February car for approval? Okay. Okay. Uh, and just a brief update to the board. I put this in the Friday update. I'm not sure if everybody saw this. But our facilities manager, Joel Hatchey, who presented to you in December, who has been with me for nine years. And we've been working together and it was, you know, obviously with all the construction and stuff that we've done over the last nine years, Joel has accepted a promotion within Aramark and will be going to a very large unit district. And he starts at the end of the month. So we're working with the Aramark regional manager to find Joel's replacement. We're looking at some of our internal candidates. But I wanted to just take a minute again to just acknowledge how great Joel has been. I know Wes and Tom, or Wes, Tom have been on the Facilities Advisory Council for the last two years, working with Joel. And Wes has seen Joel at some of the other projects. Just the, the way he's approached things has done, and, and I think I gave him some acknowledgement at the December meeting. But it's kind of bittersweet now because he's getting a great opportunity and he's earned it from the work he's done here with us. So we want to recognize his accomplishments. But those are some big shoes to fill, for sure.
Definitely be missed.
Yeah. And this, in regards to sustainability, one of, where Kristen is still looking at, was working out with Joel, and they're still looking into solar panels. But I, the one project we're really looking to try to have wrapped up, hopefully be before next school year is we want to be, uh, have our car chargers put in place in the new parking lot by the tennis courts and hopefully be using electric drivers' ed cars. So that's kind of a, a short-term goal that we're trying to accomplish before the start of next school year. So we're working on that. But that's all I have for life safety, capital improvements and sustainability.
All right. Um, school calendar?
Yeah, this is the third time we're seeing the calendar. At this point, it's probably best to recommend that the board, unless there's actual substantive changes to the actual calendar, start date, end date, break days, things like that. I think at this point in time, it makes the most sense to list that holiday as what's in schools, the state statute, which I checked and I know Mr. Smithing sent me something. I think I may have sent it to the board. But it's still, in the current school code, it is recognized as Columbus Day. So if the board wants to approve that for now with that placeholder and then should any kind of legislation change or we change, in the future, we decide to make the minor change of just calling it a non-school attendance day, that's something we can do at a later date. But for right now, probably based on the discussion we had as a group, I think it's best to just approve the overall parameters of the calendar that have been laid out for you for the last three meetings. And then we can always come back and visit this if some additional legislation comes up and change the name of that specific holiday. And I'll leave that to the discussion to the, to the board.
So just so I understand, is it be an additional revision to draft four?
Yes. Yes. It will just say Columbus, not slash Indigenous people.
So, you know, I know we started having a discussion. I, I asked the equity, equity group to take a look at it. I'm sure there's other students or faculty or, or community members who would have an opinion on this matter, certainly. You know, if, if this was presented as kind of the, the Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples' holiday to kind of go back now to just Columbus Day, I'm, I'm not as comfortable with that. Is there some other way we can leave it as a placeholder while we get some additional community input?
So I, that's what I originally was recommending, and I think this group was against. So that's what I originally was recommending and I think this group was against having Columbus slash Indigenous Day because they felt that was like a conflict. And then there was some discussion last week or two weeks ago about, well, what's in the school code? If we just go by what's in the school code, the only thing that's currently recognized as a school holiday in a state of Illinois is the Columbus Day. So then there was some discussion, do we approve it for now as Columbus Day? Or do we approve it as a non-attendance day and revisit that? So it's a matter of, you know, I think Gina brought up the example, like, we can get as much feedback from that group as we want. If it doesn't change in the statute, we would still have to recognize Columbus Day. So I think this does not matter how the board, however the board wants to label this, I'm okay with. If you're going off the statute, it's Columbus Day. I originally had both down and I think there were some board members that were concerned that it was conflicting to have both. And so where we kind of left it was, I thought, either non-school attendance day or state statute.
Is this a day we have to be out of school?
Yes.
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 You have to be out of school unless you are presenting content, where you have the waiver filled out, which we have a waiver filled out, it's like a standing waiver. But then you would have to be providing, like, background and stuff on, like we do on Veterans Day. We don't honor Veterans Day, but we have the Veterans Day Assembly, we do an instructional program.
We would have to collect a bargain with the union if we made, if we made that an attendance day.
All right, so the day, so there's two different issues going on here. I mean, this is a day that schools typically don't meet, you know, on the calendar, and that's really not up for discussion, you know?
Right.
That's a day off. The whole separate discussion is, is what, how do they want to recognize it? And that discussion is nowhere near its completion, fruition in the state or anywhere.
Right.
Right.
So right now.
It's not in completion here, I don't think we would agree.
I mean, the state is still discussing that, you know, that's, that's just in the very early stages of what they want to now think about or how they want to do that day. So right now, that day is still recognized as Columbus Day.
Well, that brings me back to what I just said. The statute recognizes it as Columbus.
Right.
So there was some discussion, I don't think the board made a decision last week. But even though they were talking about Hector taking it to his equity committee, but that even if that equity committee came back, if the statute is still Columbus Day, we may still need to recognize it as Columbus Day. So.
Yeah, so I think what I'm trying to say is that we just got to approve the calendar, the state's still calling it Columbus Day. But if we want to have an ongoing discussion about that as a separate issue, do we want to think of, do we want to recognize Columbus or do we want to recognize an Indigenous People's Day? That's a whole separate issue.
Right.
And they may decide, well, we want to have an Indigenous People's Day and not put it on what was traditionally known as Columbus. Maybe they'll pick a new day for that. I mean, that's still off in the air.
Different states do it differently.
Yes.
Some states do in September, some states do it in October, this date in October.
I need direction from the board of this, should just say non-school attendance day, because this draft needs to be posted, we normally have posted by now.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things in the school code we don't like to run. And there's some even on this, you know, we don't, we have four emergency days that we don't use. We had an emergency day last week, we didn't use it, right? Because we had school, but it's here. And it's here because it's school code, so legally we have to have emergency days.
But can I ask you a question? So if we ended up calling it, as it says here, our school calendar shows October 11th as Columbus slash Indigenous People's Day, if we were to do that, are we in breach of any?
No. Nope.
So then, I don't understa, I mean, I'll just give you my perspective. We've been through 2020 through racial unrest, everybody talks about diversity and like, we have to do better. Everybody knows that. And we're just adding, we're not taking Columbus away, we're not, we're saying Columbus slash Indigenous People's Day because everybody knows when this country was discovered, both of those groups were involved. What's the big deal? What's the downside to expanding that definition a little bit? I just, I don't understand it.
It makes things insulting to the Indigenous people to put it on that day.
To me, I don't think it's flushed out enough. Indigenous people, are we going to recognize that we stole land, that we forced them into reservations, that we literally suppressed the whole people group? I mean, is that what we're celebrating, Tom?
Well, I think, you know, if you, if you want to talk about our history in a, in an honest, uncomfortable, all that way, it's part of the story.
Yeah, right, and so maybe that's a whole different day where, you know, we can mourn instead of celebrate, but.
Right, and I agree, and I mean, maybe it should be a different day, I understand all of that, but I'm saying for this particular purpose.
For this discussion.
For this discussion, which is minute, right? And I'm not trying to downplay it, but I just personally don't really see taking a hard line on this or that side. This, if it is Columbus slash Indigenous Peoples', it's just a little more inclusive, which to me is a little more in the spirit of the age we live in.
I just see them, well, my personal bias, I would call it Columbus Day because I see them in conflict. I don't think they're synonymous. And when there's a slash, typically people see that as synonymous. They're absolutely not synonymous. They have two different philosophies, two different origins, two different modes of celebration, two different meetings, two different groups. I mean, they're very different.
So what would be, what would you consider?
I just call it Columbus Day, that's the state's.
I think these are good. These are good.
Why don't we just ask everybody what their opinion is, because we could label that for now and then we could always.
And remember, they're still not attendance day.
Right.
So we can start, well, let's start with. You get to be part of this discussion, you don't get to vote, but you get to be part of it.
I don't think you should do the slash, they are conflicting and, I don't know, there's some negativity surrounding Columbus. But since it is like by state law, like Columbus Day, I would just leave it Columbus Day for now until they like officially change it, because I don't think you should put the two together, but that's just my point.
I was in the race and equity committee, is that yesterday or is it two days ago? Yesterday? Yeah. And from their perspective, they, I thought, as a whole, everyone just didn't want Columbus Day at all, which I don't think we could do at this moment, but I think over time, that's what we should be going for because that was like a community response.
So you would go for non-attendance day?
Oh, that's not what he said, I don't think.
Okay.
He said the committee wanted Indigenous.
Yeah.
Oh, Indigenous.
What do you, he said you couldn't get rid of Columbus because of the law.
I mean, if, I mentioned that at the committee, that it's going to be up to whatever the state says, so I would say that to just leave it as Columbus Day as well, based on just the state.
Hector, before we have the board members give their opinion, you want to provide a brief update of that discussion?
Sure, yeah, I was thinking of the, I mean, we're talking about it, so we'll go now. So yesterday, we met, I want to say about 18 of our students, teachers, parents, fellow administrators from other districts, Jambulie Prada, and I want to thank everybody for attending. And we began the discussion on Columbus Day or Indigenous People's Day. You know, we kind of reviewed a little bit of the history of kind of both, both holidays. And what I got out of that meeting is that we need to, you know, strategically, you know, plan discussions, you know, around, you know, if we choose to go in one direction, you know? Maybe we bring teachers to kind of speak here, you know, on the pros and cons of having one or the other. You know, I know many of my members, you know, wanted to poll the students and to poll the community on how they see it. So really, the community kind of laid out kind of a plan for discussion. You know, like, we feel this way, however, Hector, we need to poll people, we need to survey people, we need to maybe invite, you know, I believe there's, there's some Native Americans in our community that I know worked with the middle school. So, you know, they really want more dialogue, strategic planning and more education, you know, before we kind of make a hard commitment. But, but yes, I mean, the race and equity, we're all like-minded, you know? We all lean, of course, one way to Indigenous People's Day. But I think there's a lot more work, a lot more education that needs to, you know, happen before it's decided.
Okay, so again, two board, the two student members are right now for Columbus Day, and we've got Miss Taylor.
So I'm looking at this through primarily a process lens. I mean, the administration put together the calendar. And in doing so, now as we get to draft four, we've seen this reference to Indigenous People's Days on at least two, if not three of the drafts. And I think that's an acknowledgement to Tom's point of the year we've had, 2020. It's an acknowledgement of other districts making this change, other government bodies, other elected officials. The dialogue on this point is very much in play. And I think when the group put together the calendar, including those hyphenated names, is an acknowledgement of that. And so, you know, I appreciate that and I think it's a reflection that the dialogue's not done. It certainly is not perfect to say, you know, to, I think it was Laura's point about the exclusivity of the two. Are they really appropriate as a hyphen, maybe one as a parentheses? I don't know, I can, someone else can argue the grammatical pros and cons. But I think to have this discussion now at a second board meeting and to leave it simply as Columbus Day, I'm not comfortable with that. I think we need to get to some point where they're either both on the holiday designation or we go to no attendance day with discussion about bringing in different community members or groups at the school for their opinion. So I would not be comfortable leaving this simply as Columbus Day.
So not attendance or slash?
My preference is slash.
You can say slash, that's fine, that's a vote. Okay, Tom? I'm sorry, Wes, I'm.
We're just going.
No, I'm just trying to get some.
Yeah, no, I'm remaining with the slash too, for the reasons that I've stated.
Okay, Ramona?
I think I've said this before, I would go just non-attendance.
Okay, Laura?
Columbus.
You skipped yourself.
Oh, I'm going along.
Columbus.
Columbus, I just really value and tend to always lean towards school code.
Because you read it all the time.
I actually, I do.
I brought up the school code, I would, I'm with Ramona on this one, where I would call it non-attendance and then make a decision later. We brought this up, this is the third meeting that I've tried to get us to make a decision on this and we go around in a circle. So I think we're just going to go with the, we're going to vote on it as a Columbus Day per state statute.
Sure, and you vote your fictions.
And then, and then we're going to approve the calendar as we need it approved. And if it fails, we'll have to, at the call, we'll have to redraw the calendar and do it and vote again, I guess.
You could amend the resolution, say the board approved the, the school calendar or the draft, the tentative draft of school calendar, whatever it says in there.
First state section.
Yeah, I would, I would just say that with additional discussion to follow in regards to the designation of the October 12th or 11th holiday. You know, it memorializes that you're approving the calendar, but you would still like to have additional discussion on the official.
I mean, we're going into a year of equality and diversity, I think we need to have that discussion.
October what, 13th?
What's it say on the draft of what the date is?
October 11th.
October 11th.
Thank you.
Because I think the board, in all reality, we, approval of the calendar is to more or less, we're okay with the start date, we're okay with the end date, we're okay with the winter break, we're okay. By putting in the resolution that there needs to be more discussion on how we will designate the October 11th holiday, you know, I mean, something in there, so it shows that you still want to have more discussion on this. But that's not going to impact whether or not we start school on August 17th or winter break being December, right?
The institution days are the 12th to 13th, only second going right down, grading period.
Well, that's the main thing that we need to get done here, is starting and ending dates of school and.
Correct.
Yeah, that's why we're going to vote on it.
But I think by forcing people to vote without having something in that resolution that says there's still more discussion to occur, you may have trouble getting people.
So do we have the wording, right, about more discussion?
Well, and we might find out, I mean, the state could have a discussion, or the country could have the discussion, that we no longer want to recognize Columbus Day. It could go that way. Then they could have a discussion to say that we decide we want to have a recognition of Indigenous Day. And if we're going to have a recognition of that, then we're going to have a real reckoning as a country in many ways. It could go many, many ways, it's a deep conversation and it's going to start. And it's not as simple as changing the name of holiday. There's people that think of Columbus Day as this country was, you know? I know it's not exact, but when people think of Columbus Day, they think about the country they live in. And so they have other emotions attached to that day.
So Ramona, you got something?
I do. Just double check that, right?
Regarding the designation of the, yes, regarding the designation of the October 11th.
And we'll do this as a roll call.
Non-attendance day.
Okay.
Let me just clarify before you spend time reading it, Ramona. What we're, what we're voting on is the actual calendar.
Yes.
Yes.
Start date, end date of school.
And we're going to put verbiage that the subject to change the name of.
I want to hear what Ramona's going to read it, yeah.
Ready?
Not how you're going to read it, but what you're going to read. I will try to hold back my judgment on your reading.
I'm like.
On your actual.
Stand up and go like this.
No taking a breath and no stuttering. Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois adopts the 2021, 2022 school calendar, providing for the opening day of school on Monday, August 16th, 2021, the ending day of school on Wednesday, May 25th, 2022, for a total school term of 185 days as presented in the February 9th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet, with additional discussion to follow regarding the October 11th, 2021 holiday.
Counselor, may? Do we get a second?
Second.
There you go.
Mrs. Sierra, second, and we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Canna?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes. Kevin, that one then.
I almost had to split vote again.
All right, new business, payment of bills.
I think there was one question submitted, Kristin, Kristin, you want to talk on that, please?
Question's been on Board of Committee 58, the check for Suburban Law Enforcement Academy was an error as that's the vendor right before the suburban life in the computer. That was caught after the board packet went out. That check was already voided and the new check will come to the board next month. And as a result, we have updated the resolution accordingly to exclude that bill. And that was the only question submitted.
No other questions submitted?
No.
Any motion?
Payment of bills? Okay, payment of bills. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented in the February 9th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet. Second.
Second, this is a roll call.
I'll have to put in with the exception of the.
No, I thought the resolution was updated, correct?
I didn't, no, I didn't put it on.
Okay, so let the record show the resolution is amended to a. Kristin, what's the specific check you want voided out?
Excluding the check for the Suburban Law Enforcement Academy.
So suburban law enforcement, what?
Academy.
Academy.
Do you want me to read it again?
Yes, please. I usually like to amend your resolution.
Excluding or voiding?
Excluding.
Excluding the voided check two.
Get rid of the word voided.
Including the check two, okay.
Just amend your resolution.
I would like to amend my resolution to include excluding the check to Suburban Law Enforcement Academy.
Second, the amended motion.
Okay, roll call, Maryam.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Canna?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Smithing?
Yes. Okay, Swanson Scholarship Account Direct Deposit.
Yes, this, Kristin, you want to provide an update, please?
Sure, so following the death of a longtime math teacher here at RB, James A. Swanson, the district was notified that he abuqueezed shares to the district of stocks in place of a scholarship fund. So we give out this scholarship. So, we give out this scholarship on behalf of him every year, and the district manages the fund, and we continue to receive revenue from shareholder dividends, but we've been notified that in order to do so, they are moving to direct deposit, and so, we need to, in order to fill out the forms for direct deposit, they are requesting that we have the board pass a resolution within the past six months, listing the individuals that are able to make transactions for that account, which would be myself and Dr. Skinkis. So, while this is a first read, it would be helpful if the board would consider approving it tonight, which is why we've provided a suggested motion.
This is a housekeeping item, and we've done this before, yes?
Is there any objection to?
So, in the summer, we normally do like a general resolution that Dr. Skinkis and myself are approved signers on all of the accounts, but that is not within the last six months, and so that's why we're asking for this to be approved.
This is a first, this is new, this is a move, right? Because this has not been direct deposit in the past.
Correct, correct.
So, this is a change, this is a first time ever.
Okay.
But then, it'll become part of the regular-
It's just another piece of, another record that the board took formal action, so when the bank starts getting these direct deposits, they know it's not just Kristen and I putting the money in an account, it's-
It's the first time we're ever doing this, and now it becomes part of the regular accounts, but it memorializes when this began.
Yes, but if the board wants to see it twice, we can see it twice.
No, I was going to say, is there any objections to voting on it, on this side? Any objections on that side? Okay, let's read the resolution.
Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby designates Dr. Kevin Skinkis Superintendent and Dr. Kristen Smithana Assistant Superintendent as the individuals who are able to sell, assign, and transfer securities for the Swanson Scholarship Fund as presented in the February 9th, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sierra, roll call.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Smithen?
Yes. Yearbook proposal, first read.
Our current three-year contract with Jostens expires in June, and we've been with Jostens for the past six years. To give the board a little background, there are three major vendors that provide yearbooks, Jostens, Herff Jones, and Walsworth. In the past, the district worked with Herff Jones, but we had some concerns regarding service at the time, and some publishing issues, and so, we decided to switch to Jostens and our yearbook staff. Both the sponsor and the students have been really pleased with how that has been going. There's no cost to the district for renewing the yearbook contract, we, the district pays the contracted price upfront, but recovers the full cost through student fees collected through the yearbook sales. Currently, the district charges $50 for a yearbook when purchased at registration, $55 between registration and the end of first semester, and then $60 after January 1st. The administration is recommending the continuation with Jostens, and if that were to occur, there would be no increase in student yearbook fees for next year. Do want to call to the board's attention, Walsworth did provide a quote that would allow the district to sell the yearbook at $2 cheaper per book next year, however, that $2 saved for all students would be offset by the increased cost for senior ads, because Walsworth charges a commission fee for senior ads and takes money off of the top of the sales, whereas Jostens currently does not. So, while we would save $2 for freshmen, sophomore, and junior, seniors would end up having to pay anywhere from two to additional $4 for the senior ads if they chose to purchase them. Additionally, you know, switching a yearbook company is a lot of work for all the students involved to learn a new software program, and a new approach, as well as the yearbook sponsor, and I don't know if this is the summer we want to tackle that and take that on, to save it an additional $2. So, this is a first read, and there were no questions submitted, but I'm happy to answer any questions at this board meeting or the next board meeting, and we'd be looking for approval at the next board meeting, to stick with Jostens is our recommendation.
Does any of them offer a price guarantee beyond one year? Is there a multi-year offer?
No, none of them provided that.
Do we offer any reduce, free or reduce for?
This is not part, this is not covered under free and reduced lunch. So, like, we waive athletic fees or those auxiliary fees, but since they're purchasing basically an actual book?
Yeah, outside of.
Right.
Okay. Maybe we, maybe we should look at that, it's an idea. Okay. One more, I don't have any more questions, then we get any more questions?
I guess I would say this might be a good thing for the student members to weigh in on, I'd like to get your feedback at the next meeting as to, you do like the yearbook?
No, I'm full supi-, I like Jostens, I mean-
I wouldn't mean to put you on the spot now, I mean, you can look at the proposals, I just think that would be, this is a good integration with you guys and the board, I'd like to get your feedback.
I feel like the students won't have much of a preference, I mean, I feel like it more is the decision of the yearbook.
Yeah, I think the yearbook's opinion is-
The students can take yearbook, because I, like, have never worked with Jostens or the other ones, so I don't really have any sort of opinion there.
I think, I think listening to the yearbook committee is what should be done. I think they, they're the ones who are working with it the most, and I think that their opinion was, should be listened to the most.
Kristen, you included the yearbook staff on this decision and the yearbook committee? Okay?
Great.
Their kids just care if their pictures in there, right, right to the index.
So, right now, parent, when, right now, the cost for students, for senior ads to parents would not be increased?
Correct.
If we stayed with that.
Correct.
Right, and they don't take a cut of that.
Correct, of course, you can see the other companies do.
Right, okay, which would help keep it low. Okay, matters for closed session. Personnel sale, lease property, pending imminent litigation, collective negotiation, school safety, another opportunity to revisit our statements. Okay, discussion items, any requested? I didn't get any requested.
The future agenda item from Ms. Salas and student board members.
Yes. We talked about that, is there any other future item?
We're going to get an update on the permission statement.
Yep, we've put that as an agenda, as a line item here.
Under discussion.
Number four, these. And, we're going to continue our Columbus Day equality, diversity conversation.
Equity.
Okay, closed session.
Okay, closed session. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second.
Second by Mr. Jacobs.
Is it a roll call?
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salas?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruska?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Mr. Smithen?
Yes. All right, adjournment.